Now. One more minute. All right, it looks like we're now live on YouTube as well. So sorry about that, everyone. Technical problems, but we're through that at the moment. All right. So we should now be recording on the Zoom cloud and broadcasting on the region on YouTube site. So I am going to call the regular meeting of the Region Nine Board of Education on August 18th to order at 7:42 PM. Have all the board members, it looks like, present. Accounted for and all board members look like everybody's unmuted as well. All right. So the first item of business that we have is the approval of the minutes from the July 21st, 2020 Genine Board of Education Regular Meeting. Get a motion. Minutes.
A move.
All right, Mike, a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any any discussion, any corrections amendments to the minutes? All right, seeing none. And we'll call the question. So all in favor of the minutes as written. So by saying I use your hand so I can see everybody. It looks like everyone was in favor of you. All right. Then the next item of business, I don't know, three public comment. So again, for members of the public, we ask that you keep your comments to two minutes or less. Say your name and address. If you can raise your hand, if you've got the video going or use the hand symbol on mobile phone, because I see a few phones on here. You could do star nine to raise the hand symbol or star six to unmute yourself. So again, if you can identify yourself right now, we will unmute you and ask you to go ahead and make comments. Cheryl, if you can help me look, I see it looks like Nicole. All right. So I'm sure if you can help me make sure we get people unmuted, Nicole, I'm gonna unmute you. And go ahead, Nicole.
Fabulous. Hi, thanks for having us tonight. We appreciate it. This is a crazy process and I'm glad to be involved and have all of you guys listening to us. My, I'm Black Rock Turnpike in Reading. My son is a rising 10th grader. And my biggest concern is the, he'll be going to school Monday and Tuesday. And my biggest concern is Wednesday and Thursday. Last year was a super isolating time for him, you know, not being able to have FaceTime with his teachers and his peers. And I really want to make sure that we start to navigate that for all the students this year. So I'm wondering what we can do on Wednesdays to make Wednesday, since everybody's at home, a much more collaborative time. You know, if we're purchasing platforms for the teachers to use, whether it's Zoom or another platform, there's way for us to be able to create really great collaborative collaborative processes, whether it's social issue inspirational speakers, you can do it by grade, you can do it by cohort, whatever you see fit. But there's ways for them to be able to do pre-work. There's ways for them to be able to do discussions and there's ways for them to feel really connected as a as a team within school versus what happened last time. So I'm thinking about how can we modify Wednesdays to make it look really impactful for them? And then on Thursdays and Fridays, when my son's at home, you know, who's gonna modify the live stream? So who will be the gatekeeper to say, this is what our expectations look like for a live stream? This is how we're gonna make sure that the students stay connected. This is who's gonna be the benchmark and where all the teachers need to aspire to, because I know there's gonna be peaks and valleys. But I want to make sure that we're striving to get to the best possible way to connect with them while they're not in school. And the last but not least, on those days when they are at home, I'm still not clear what that schedule looks like. So is it they're they're getting about nine and they're sitting in front of their cameras and for their computers for four hours? Do they get to do their work and then log in for certain times? So I just like more clarity on what the at-home time will look like for them. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sure we'll have some answers to those questions and some of our later items that we have on the agenda here. So thank you. Any other members of the public? Would like to speak during the public comment? We do have another section of public comment at the end of the meeting. If you make it that long through it, because we go long sometimes on these meetings. All right, I don't see anyone else. Or members, do you see anybody else? I don't see anyone else with hands up. All right, then we'll move on then to item number four. Board member comment. Any of the members of the board have any opening comments? All right. Seeing none, then we'll move to administrative reports, item number five on the agenda. Who would like to start? Dr. Pierce Newble or Dr. Penn Scott, who would like to start for the administrative reports portion?
My update will really be incorporated into the reopening presentation that the Barlow leadership team will share. Unless the board members have any questions for me specific to the reopening of school after that presentation, I will hold for now.
Thank you.
Can can I have permission to share my screen, Todd, just for one quick image in my administrative report?
All right, you should be a co-host now, should be able to share.
Okay. I pulled it up, but I didn't hit share my screen. I just had one slide to show and to share, just to do a big shout out to one of our teachers, Erin Pinsky. And I'm going to include this in the slide deck that we'll post online, because I really would love to encourage all the board members and all the community to visit the New York Times website. I put the link down at the bottom. The New York Times has identified 60 educators from, they represent 29 different states and has highlighted them in this amazing article. And the very first picture on the website is our Erin Pinsky. And then as you read through the article, it's alphabetical and you'll see that the project that Erin won this recognition for is titled Native American Experiences and Public Policy. It is an incredible initiative that she is taking with students and to have this recognized by the New York Times and their teaching project. It just paints our school. It's so wonderful to see, you know, Joel Barlow High School, Reading, Connecticut, Narin Pinsky in the New York Times. It's really wonderful. So a big thank you to Mrs. Pinsky for her work in this. And I just thought that was something definitely worth sharing. And the rest of my administrative report is definitely embedded in the rest of the slide deck that I'll share later on. Thank you for letting me share that time.
And I can provide a brief update. From effective, the documents that I distributed to the board include the budget object summary, the transfers report and the health insurance report. You note that the transfers report was a report I created because we had no transfers. But I wanted to confirm that that in fact was the case, that we had no transfers. The system does not generate a report for me when there are no, no actual information to report on. When the health insurance claims report, it's the report that is through June claims, the July, what July report is not yet ready based on other priorities that we had currently in central office, but I can share with you that our July claims number is probably going to be about 200K. That's much higher than our average was last year, but this is consistent with what our insurance brokers have been sharing with us is that we should anticipate what were lower claims in the last several months due to COVID, beginning to then show up as access to healthcare facilities increased. So I don't think that's a surprising number. And and the last thing I would comment on is the budget object summary. This is the 1920 report. We're still in the process of completing out 1920. Well, last payroll just ran last week for 1920 numbers. So we'll be closing this out over the coming weeks to get in any last remaining invoices that were remaining open at the end of June. But the bottom line number in terms of unexpended, which I know has been a focus of the board is that I remain on my outlook that this is going to end up at about 1.7 million in unexpended funds. That's what I shared in the July meeting and also in the June meeting. So that's remaining on track as it has been throughout. And then I had one final item that I just wanted to update the board on, and that is that we went out to bid earlier in the springtime for a replacement audit firm. That audit firm covers the Region Nine School District as well as the towns of Eastern and the towns of Reading. So that was a joint RFP process that we went through. But I and the and the team at Central Office have been working with the new audit firm since they really started up some of their activities in June. But they've been in the office working now for two, two separate days onsite over the last six weeks, as well as a numerous data requests which we're responding to. There would be more of an update from the from the audit firm, probably in the September timeframe or so, as they work towards getting further into the details and be able to provide then the audit committee a better update on their status and progress at that point. But they're certainly on track for the same target review cycle that we've had previously where the board would see a draft of that report in the November meeting and the final version for approval in their December meeting. That's everything I had to cover.
Thank you. Are there any other administrative reports? Okay, we'll move on to item. Number six, committee reports. Remember for committees would like to report?
Todd, I have a brief update for pension curriculum.
All right.
Okay, so the pension committee met on July 27th and we, a couple of agenda items and and two motions. We firstly reviewed the investment policy statement for the defined contribution plan. If some of the board members may recall that we last looked at the investment policy statement for the defined contribution plan, that would be what we know as a 401K plans and certainly but for state employees. There were no major changes that were recommended by our USI advisory firm that advises us on the plans. However, we did make a administrative change to the name of the, to reflect the correct name in the investment policy statement of the actual defined contribution plan. So the committee moved to make that, that, that administrative change within the policy. Nothing substantive, however. The USI also presented a fiduciary oversight review of the defined contribution defined benefit plans. So that's the pension plans. And then the highlight there was that we recovered nearly all of the investment losses that we lost since the beginning of the year, based on the current allegation strategy. So that was positive news there. And the other motion that the committee approved was to change the actuarial assumption of the investment return for defined benefit plan. So what that means is the actual investment return of the assets that are invested for that defined benefit plan assumes a certain return. For years, we were using 6.75%. However, our methodology requires that that percent of likelihood of that return be at least 50%. So using a 6.75 assumed return on the defined benefit plan assets is now at a 45% likelihood. So the committee approved to go with a, a more conservative recommendation of a 6.5% return on the pension plan asset. So that was a change in the assumptions that would be applied going forward. So with respect to curriculum, the committee met on the, on it's the 11th, on August 11th. And it was primarily primarily informative review of our humanities curriculum. We did briefly discuss of the $45,000 that was approved by the Region I board to be for diversity and inclusion initiatives. We did talk a little bit about a portion of that 5,000 was allocated to evaluate and review the humanities curriculum with 2,500 of that specifically used or at least committed to be, to be, to be paid out. And then we actually did an analysis of the actual humanities curriculum. The staff did an excellent job of walking us through how our curriculum currently addresses DNI as well as what recommendations could be made in the future for consideration by the administration, the committee, and then ultimately the board as applicable. So we went through that in detail. I think the minutes will reflect the more mechanics, but any changes that would require committee and board approval would obviously go through those respective groups. And then there are any other changes that the administration does have, have authority to make, certainly would just be done in the normal course of their activities. And then we did briefly discuss as far as what would be on the agenda for the committee and the board in the future over the next coming months. One of the things that we wanted to hold up on was the, the proposal from Connecticut Educational Services. The administration is expecting that proposal, but we did want to wait until the new superintendent comes on board to evaluate next steps and how to move forward. Short term, long, we discussed short term and long term actions. So there could be some short term activities over the couple of months. Once the new super comes on board, as well as long term activities that are part of the normal curriculum review. So there are, there is a lot of work that we're, we're gonna be doing and the committee members did ask for also not just diversity and inclusion, but ask for us to address, to take a look at review of AP courses. Specifically going back to DNI or review at a future, at either future curriculum and or board meetings of the presentation of what the administration would like to move forward as far as the consultants to be able to look at DNI curriculum. And then of course, any short term changes. And if there are long term changes to next year, then then that would, that would come in conjunction with our budget plan. So more to come, but just the brief update on, on what the curriculum committee did over the last month.
Great, thank you. Do we have a, do we have a consultant yet?
We, oh, go ahead, Stephanie.
Yeah, I mean, we have signed on with that advance and I have proposals. I have a proposal from Cooperative Educational Services. And I have begun a communication with Dr. Harrison. And I would like him to have input into the plan as it rolls forward. So the, the team that has been hired is the Ed Advance team. And then in terms of the specifics of individual consultants who will work to do additional review of the curriculum, much of that occurred over the summer, but in terms of bringing in the outside perspectives, that will begin once Dr. Harrison joins us and he can give his blessing to the work thus far and the additional consultants to be hired.
It just seems like we, we took an unusual path. It doesn't seem like it followed the steps that were originally outlined and I'm concerned that the the amount that we put forward was the amount that we were told was necessary to be able to bring in a consultant to be able to advise us. And now it seems like we're chopping it up into a lot of little pieces to do work that we would have been doing anyway. So I'm just a little concerned and I hope that at some point we do have a consultant that can bring, you know, an outside view and kind of give us guidance on, on best practice and how to move forward because you know, we had the opportunity to do it in-house and then we felt that it was something that we, we weren't able to do. We didn't, we didn't have the staffing to be able to get that done in the amount of time, you know, in the time that it would needed to be done. And it seems now like we were kind of slow stepping and chopping it up. So I would just hope that we're gonna get back on track and that we I have confidence that everything's gonna be fine. I just it seems like it's taken a different path. That's all. So.
I'm glad you have confidence. We indeed are moving along. I cannot imagine adding any more hours to Angela's Darren or Erin Pinsky's summer. They have completed a tremendous amount of work. We have spent the money exactly as we had planned, $5,000 set aside for curriculum revision work over the summer. They continue to work. I anticipate spending close to that full amount. Certainly by the end of September with all of the hours that the two of them have put in. And it's the consultant piece that I would not say there's been a delay. I would say that I am holding the proposals because I certainly want our new leader to have a voice in this work. But frankly, the curriculum review that took place over the summer was incredibly thorough. I think that the presentation to the curriculum committee really demonstrated the thoroughness of their review. And that will expedite and really point towards more effective work with the outside consultant. And and as I've said before, it is my hope that we can have two different people brought in to give their perspectives regarding our curriculum. So again, you know, we, we talk about the danger of just having one perspective. I want more than one perspective. To do that, we have the internal and then two from the outside. And then the additional consultants would be more for staff professional development.
Yeah, no. And again, thank you for, I appreciate the work the staff does. And again, it was, it was my hope that this was gonna be it wasn't gonna incorporate more than just curriculum that this was with, with the consultant was going to bring. And you know, I absolutely want to fairly compensate our employees, but I, I don't remember designating 5,000 of the 45,000 to do curriculum. Where we're chopping it up is basically what what's happening. And really, I thought we were bringing someone in who was going to advise us on best way to move forward rather than us doing revisions and stuff on our own and then asking them you know, kind of how we did. But but again, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it. I'm sure it's, it's gonna get there. It's just taking a little different path. That's all.
I'll let a board member speak to their memory of how the money was, was being divided. But let me clarify. They haven't conducted major revisions at this point. They've done a review. They've raised questions about a number of courses. They've thought through possible ways that things could be changed. They can make small changes in terms of readings. But it's not as if they've done all of the work that needs to be done. And then someone's just gonna confirm that it was the right thing to do or the wrong thing. As you can imagine, there are so many courses that fall under the umbrella of the humanities and we shouldn't limit our work just to the humanities as well. So it, they have started and I think that they've made very good work use of the summertime and the work certainly will continue. But I appreciate the interest in the additional input.
All right, I can move on. Any other committee reports? Mike?
So the facilities committee met at 6:30 prior to this meeting. And at that time, we reviewed the capital plan and several revisions and updates that were made to that plan. And I hope Scott, board members were sent that plan in advance. So does, does everybody have that plan or no?
All right, Mike, I shared it with committee members, not the entire board. I could share my screen if that would be helpful.
Would that be possible, Todd, that we could put it up on the screen quickly?
Yeah, Scott, you, if you've got it open, I made you a co-host. You can share out. If not, I can open it.
Okay, bringing it up now.
And then we'll send it around to the rest of the board members that were not on the committee.
So just so we don't lose any time as we go forward. The the items are in red, but they're not all new items. They've just been updated by Scott and Walter. Many of the, much of the pricing info has been updated and, and there are a few new projects that are on the new plan. But as I said, many of these items have been on the plan that has already been approved. And again, I don't want to go through every item, but there, there are a few new items that are on here. The air purification we discussed in, in March, when we talked about HVAC and the cafeteria and the gym HVAC project we had spoken about at a board meeting as well. Air conditioning chillers has been on there for quite some time. This wastewater treatment plant repairs, I'd like to speak to that separately after we hopefully approve the new plan. So I'd be happy to speak to that one. Carpet replacement, we have again, discussed many times and at the last at a board meeting in March, I guess. The tunnel work piping has been on the list. The HVAC in the auditorium, the stage floor and the RTU in the band room have all been previously on the list. They have just either had their priority or their condition ranking adjusted or their pricing has been updated on some of these items as well. So the facilities committee, the facilities and fields committee did review this quite extensively. And the board did, the committee did make a recommendation through the Region Nine Board to accept this plan. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to move that the Region Nine Board of Education approved the revisions and accept the updated document as the approved capital plan.
Second.
Second, great. Mike made the motion, Glenn. It's a second. All right. All right, any other discussion from board members on the capital as presented?
Can you just restate the motion again?
Yes, move that the Region Nine Board of Education approved the revisions and accept the updated document as the approved capital plan.
Okay.
Right, so we have a motion that's been seconded. And if no one has any other comments or questions?
I have one question with respect to the, the, what's planned in currently planned in 2021 to 2020, 2020 to 2021. Is there rough timing on, on some of these? Is it just during the course of this, this, the school upcoming school year?
So I will let Scott speak to that one. I, I believe that, yeah, it looks like most of the priority ones have been put in this, in this school year. Meaning that our hope is to get those projects done as possible as we can afford it in the capital reserve. But Scott, did you wanna?
Yeah, there, and they're also placed there really from the standpoint of the urgency, the relative urgency of them. So as to indicate that they're earlier than everything else. What, what would be needed is the necessary work to actually develop a schedule, which would require all the project scoping and bidding necessary in order to get several of these items that are listed in 2020 to 2021 underway. And that work has not yet begun.
All right, any other discussion? I can go ahead and vote on it and call the question. On favor, board members for the capital plan as it's presented here. Amendment in the motion, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed. All right, passes unanimously.
Okay, so now I'd like to speak to the fourth item on the list, which is wastewater treatment plant repairs. And so that is a new item to the capital plan. As I detailed when, when I went through this. The the reason for the addition for this item is that we have wastewater treatment plant, for those who aren't avail, aware of how we function here. We have a wastewater treatment plant. And the last stage of treating the waste before it's dispersed is, is a UV system. And the component, uh, equipment for, for the UV system is well beyond its, uh, expected life. We have been keeping it going for many years, uh, doing repairs to it as needed. However, we have recently become aware that there are repairs needed and the parts are no longer available. And so we can't get the parts and the components to re, to repair the unit. And so we're in a position where, uh, in order to maintain compliance with DEEP guidelines, we really need to replace this equipment because repairing it is no longer an option because we can't get the necessary parts and components to, um, repair it. And so again, this was discussed at the facilities committee meeting quite extensively. And the, um, the committee did recommend that we, uh, they did move that we recommend the board to take action on this item. So I'd like to make another motion. I'd like to move that the region nine board of education approve the funding for equipment replacement and associated work necessary to maintain DEEP compliance in the wastewater treatment plant, not to exceed $45,000 and to fund the project through the capital reserve. I can say that again, Juliette, if you need.
Yeah, please do. Okay, so proof funding, um.
For equipment replacement and associated work necessary to maintain DEEP compliance in the wastewater treatment plant, not to exceed $45,000 and to fund the project through the capital reserve.
Okay.
Do we have a second from board members?
Second.
Second, Glenn, okay. All right, further discussion from the board. All right, hearing none, then we'll call the question. All in favor, the repairs on the wastewater treatment plant signify by saying aye or raise your hands. Count.
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's everybody. Looks like it passes unanimously then. All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other board members, any other committee reports? All right, I'm sorry, go ahead, Maureen.
I was just going to give you a brief update with the policy committee.
Excellent. Policy update.
Hey, you know, policy committee is considering then changes to title nine. But the regulations that have been promulgated that we really need to consider are 2,000 pages in length. As a consequence, the policy committee has sought outside councils input in terms of telling us what the salient provisions are that we really should spend our, our greatest attention focusing on. But we continue to meet every Friday and we are working through a wholesale revision to the policy book that will remove aspirational guidelines, put them in one place, remove duties, put them in one place and, and have a much more streamlined product when we get it. So that's our update.
Excellent, thank you. All right, any other committee reports? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to item seven, discussion and possible action. And our first item, A, school reopening plan. So I will turn it over to Dr. Pearson, you go, and Dr. Penn. And you both should be co-hosts so you can present.
I am going to share my screen.
This is, this is, this presentation will come from the high school team.
Okay, thank you.
And so, thank you for, um, for giving us the time to discuss our reopening plan. And I wanted to thank especially the members of the public who have shared their thoughts and ideas with us. And we invite you to continue to do so. At the end of this presentation, I'll share a date for a town hall meeting. It's actually going to take place tomorrow. And this plan is not complete. We don't anticipate it being complete until all of our teachers are back in the building and our students are here. And we get to run through what we think will work and then make changes as, as necessary. I'll stress that this reopening plan was part of the presentations that the board has already seen. I wanted to keep the same format because I just thought that would be easier for the board and for the public to follow as we're going through these slides. I won't spend a lot of time talking about slides that we've already seen if they haven't been changed directly and haven't been edited directly. Okay, so we had, um, this slide is familiar to our parents and our board. This was a slide that was presented to discuss one of the state's options, which was a temporary learning from home option for our parents. And what has changed on this is what's highlighted at the bottom, which is there will be a Google form that will be on the website for any parent that wishes to change their option. Parents are either deciding to go ahead with our September model. And again, the model I'll be presenting and, and speaking about involves just the month of September. Um, and that's our transition to full hybrid. Parents have the option to have a learning from home option. And they have until Wednesday to respond to the survey that Stephanie's office, Dr. Pearson, Ugle's office sent out. If they miss that date or change their mind, they can access a form and that will alert us that they're changing their decision. We had a survey, again, that survey that went out to parents as of the 14th. Again, as I stressed, Dr. Pearson, Ugle has extended that survey. So the next three slides are just representative of the 582 responses that we received as of August 14. And you could see from this pie chart that we're looking at a fairly good representation across our grades. And this was an important slide for us. This question asked, when school begins on September 8th, my child will either temporarily learn from home or participate in the hybrid that I'll be explaining later on in more detail. You can see that out of the respondents, 92.6% are saying that they are going to participate in the hybrid. And only 7.4% will be temporarily learning from home. Now, we do know that not every parent responded to this survey. So we will be making an effort to compile the new information that we'll be receiving from central office. And then we will also try to reach out so that we have a very good feel of who will be in front of us on September 8th. We also asked about technology. And what we wanted to know specifically was if the child, if their, their student was in grade six through 12, did that student have a technol- technological device for his or her use? And you could see that out of the, the parents that responded, 5.7% said, no, there was no, no use, uh, no technology for that person to use. But over 90%, 94% said, yes, there were. 100% of the Barlow parents who responded to the survey confirmed internet access at home. So that was, those were, were good indicators for us that the plan we are putting forward is, is, is going to be in good working order for the majority of our families and that we have some safeguards in place to help families who may need our assistance. This slide, the board and public has seen before. There are no changes to this. This is our distance learning and in-person learning. We're calling this our transition to all-in hybrid model. And that's what I will be explaining in these next slides as we go forward. You could see we have the two cohorts, one cohort coming in Monday, Tuesday, and then distance learning on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Another cohort, distance learning, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and coming into the building in person on Friday. As you'll recall, when Dr. Pearson, Ugle originally explained this model, we stressed that this was not being instituted because of medical indicators, rather as a desire to slowly get used to the protocols and the, the differences that, what education will look like. And it's only for the month of September. So let me start to put a little bit of, of meat in this and to say, okay, what will our schedule look like at Barlow? The first part, the board saw before, and that is we'll be following a Falcon schedule. And you could see all those bullets, they haven't changed on, of, of why we are deciding to go with a Falcon schedule. What has changed is the second section, which says when the cohort is not present in person. And this is, these are comments that we received from the community and from our teachers and from our students even. What will they be doing when they're in that distance learning model for three days a week? Well, when a student is not in person, so if you're in the Monday, Tuesday cohort, on Thursday and Friday, students will be logging in for that live stream, um, presentation. They'll be logging in from home for attendance purposes at the beginning of every class. And that's a big departure from our previous model where distance learning meant students had the assignment and they worked on their own and they didn't contact us and they didn't log on synchronously. I'm sure we've heard the word synchronous and asynchronous. And so in our model now that we're, that we're going to be instituting in September, students will log on from home for attendance purposes at the beginning of class. And how long that student stays present online is going to be determined by the teacher. And I'll speak to a slide I, at the, towards the end of this presentation about the academic changes. And I'll give a little bit more detail in there. So the teacher controls the streaming of the live instruction. The students who are opting for the temporary learning from home option would log in via Zoom. That's the platform we're using. And they would log in daily to every class session. The teacher again is determining how long the student is going to be present in that session. On Wednesdays, except for that first Wednesday, distance learning is going to be instituted all day for students and our adults will be in the building. So what will that look like? That's when the students' day will start at 9:30. And there will be a variety of activities and opportunities for students. Some will be mandated, some will be appointments with teachers. It may be small group instruction, it may be extra help time. But that will take place from 9:30 to 2:07 on Wednesdays. And again, when I get later in the presentation, there will be many more details that I'll be able to share for how that will work. This is a slide that has not changed. It speaks to our masks and face coverings. And I, it, it was shared a couple of times. So the, the distancing is all still in place. Our six-foot distancing when eating. But something that has changed is highlighted here under health and safety. And that is our ventilation. We know that from our interaction with the materials the CDC has sent and our own Department of Health officials, we know how important properly functioning HVAC systems are. Our areas that needed the most attention are cafeteria, the lower gym restrooms are getting that attention. So there's now a portable HVAC unit in the cafeteria. There are ventilation plans under work, under, uh, being worked on right now in our lower gym and our restrooms. And then you'll also see highlighted on this slide, the medical exemption for regarding masks has been approved now by the tribe or by the joint boards of education as a policy. If we move on to facilities, this information hasn't changed, but it's so important that our students and our parents all understand what we're talking about when we're talking about our plan for the morning and the afternoon. And we'll be sharing this information in many different ways and different forums. But here it is as clear as we can make it. So we're using the bus loop. The bus loop at Barlow is that parking loop that is closest to the building. And buses will arrive in that bus loop between 7:00 and 7:10 in the morning. And students will get off the bus at that point. We're only using the flagpole entrance. And then we are asking parents who are dropping students off to not begin to enter that loop until 7:15. They'll use the bus loop and all students will exit the parent, their parents' cars via that, that flagpole entrance. That will begin at 7:15. And students who are driving to school will park because we're going into a transition to full hybrid. We anticipate we will only need the upper parking lot. And we'll ask students to stay in their cars and they may exit their vehicles at 7:15. And again, we have supervision in the parking lot. So we will not have students in each other's cars and, um, we'll, hopefully they will arrive at 7:15, which is about when they start to come to school anyway. Our start school time has not changed. It's still 7:30 for that first class. So what will students do from 7:00 to 7:30? We will have supervision. This is part of the information that the board and the public have seen from Scott Rice when he was preparing our anticipated costs. And one of those costs were for extra supervision. And we anticipate having that need in the cafeteria, the upper gym and the auditorium. So we know some students come to Barlow in the morning and they are eating breakfast here. And so those students will be directed to the cafeteria. Students will wait in the cafeteria only if they're actively eating. It will be set up in a safe environment for them. The upper gym and the auditorium will be used for students to gather, again, socially distanced with their masks on. And they'll wait for that release to first period class. So it will look different at Barlow. And this is something that we will, will communicate well to our students. I think our upperclassmen are going to feel that loss. The morning time at Barlow is, is one of our favorite times. Those of us who are here early, the students gather and talk and meet their friends. We'll still be able to do that, but just a little bit further away and a little bit more controlled. We're not going to have students waiting in hallways. So we'll be directing students to these supervised areas as they enter the building. And as I said, when I first started this presentation, we'll see how it goes. If this is a disaster and we have too many students trying to get through too few doors and we will adjust it all. I think our mantra is going to be to ask for patience, to ask for compassionate problem solving and, and feedback. And some of this, we're only going to know how it works when we have our school full of students. So staying on facilities, I'm highlighting here a couple of more details that we have enacted since our decision to transition to full on in that hybrid schedule. So there is a room repurposed within our nursing suite. And that room, none of us, by the way, like the name isolation room. But that's the, that's the, the term the state has handed down. Basically, that is a place where if a student has signs of the, the flu, COVID-19, the nurse feels that student needs to go home. We're going to have that student wait for pickup in this isolation area. And, um, the, the goal, as you know, from And the goal, as you know from reading, the full reopening plan is to be able to have a parent, a guardian, someone be able to come to the school within 30 minutes when they're notified that their child is waiting in that isolation room. Because of the way we're using the nurse's office, you'll also see in our plan that the visits to the nurse's office should be limited to that urgent need or when a student is experiencing COVID-19 or flu-like symptoms. I anticipate this may be the hardest challenge at the elementary schools and where maybe students are used to going in and out of the nurse's office more often. At the high school, we do have some students who maybe just need to take a little break. We'll try to find other areas for students to do that. But we'll really try to limit the nurse's office to those urgent needs. We know that visitors are in general are not permitted in the school and that all of our deliveries and contract workers will all wear masks. You heard when we presented this back in July that we were debating how we were going to have students move through the hallways. We had contemplated one-way hallways. What we settled on after measuring and looking and consulting with teachers and students is we're going to have two-way hallways. We will have a tape line down the middle of the hallways. They're there now. And it will just encourage students to walk to that right side of the hallway. There are no locker use, there's no locker use in this school. So we anticipate that students will really use the hallways just to pass from place to place and not to gather and talk in the hallways with their friends at that time. Opening in a transition to full hybrid, we are also confident that the hallways will not be crowded. And so this gives us a chance again to evaluate it. If we're seeing that we really need to create one-way hallways, it's something we certainly can do. But in the interest of keeping things calm, knowing that our freshmen, the class of 2024, for many of them, this is their first time in our high school. Although we have some orientation days, it'll be easier for them to navigate if we keep our halls two ways with a delineation in the middle. Much of this slide in facilities has not changed, but something that has changed is you will notice designated waiting areas outside of restrooms. We will have hall monitors that will be making sure students don't all gather in the restrooms or take too long in the hallway that they're moving through. We've never had hallway monitors at Barlow, not in a long time anyway. And then you'll notice when you are in the building that there are hand sanitizer mounts and they are outside of every restroom. They're also outside of many offices that we have there. The food service, food service has not changed. The food service is I'm sorry. The food service is divided into two waves. And they are, that gives us time in between lunch waves for cleaning. And we do know, we have requested a custodian, a new position for a custodian to assist in that cleaning, especially during lunch, but also that extra cleaning throughout the building. And we still anticipate that as a need. This slide has not changed. Some things have changed in transportation since we last presented. And that is our PPEs, seats will be assigned. Those personal protective equipment, masks will be worn on the bus. Even at the high school level, we will have seats assigned for students. And then when we presented this the last time, we weren't sure the plan we were going to use, whether we were going to have daily cleaning or we were going to have monthly cleaning. We settled, the central office selected the plan of daily cleaning. And the pickup drop-off, I explained earlier. I like to call this slide my Patty Roscoe slide because she coined the phrase as we were talking about this in "to be patient, to be kind, and be teaching." This has not changed. We are delaying high-stakes assessments. We're meeting with our teachers to think of are there courses that we may need to jump into more quickly? Some of our upper-level courses, some of our courses for our juniors and seniors. And so we'll evaluate that as we go. But we are looking at a slower start to the school year. I think this is probably the slide I want to really dig into a little bit and make sure that I'm responding to questions I've heard the community ask and questions that the board has asked us to address as well. And this is specifically about our academics and athletics. And what you see here is our plan, which is similar to what went on in distance learning, but in a much more robust way. We'll be using Google Classroom. And unit objectives will be identified. There'll be a weekly plan for the in-person cohort. There'll be a plan for the distance learning cohort. For some classes, if students are in-person learning and distance learning, they're going to spend their whole class period, that it's about a 40-minute period. And they'll either be in-person or they will be livestreamed in for the entire class. Sometimes they might not be livestreamed in for the entire class because we anticipate that in-person time may be used by teachers for assessments. It may be used for teachers for maybe a timed write or a lab project. It could be group projects. So the teacher will determine how long the student needs to stay logged in in a live stream environment. But every student, whether they are in-person or distance learning or they are temporarily learning from home, has to be accounted for. So in the beginning of every class, that's how we're going to do this. We will be taking attendance via Zoom. And actually Zoom has a program that we're exploring that allows attendance to be taken for a teacher who's trying to manage those multiple cohorts of students. Wednesdays will look different. And again, we're not talking every Wednesday for the whole year. We are talking Wednesdays, three Wednesdays actually, because that first Wednesday, September 9th, we're going to bring in our first cohort. The A-through-K cohort will actually attend school Tuesday, September 8th, and then Wednesday, September 9th. And they'll attend in-person on those days. And then they will attend virtually on Thursday and Friday. So normally on Wednesdays, our three normal, I don't know if we can use the word "normal" this year because everything seems so new and nothing that we've done before. But what our plan is for those Wednesdays will be to bring the teachers are all in every day. We will have PD in the morning, you saw from our schedule that I showed you earlier. And then there will be office hours. So during those office hours, students may have an appointment with a teacher. And we would expect the student to log in and keep that appointment. This may be a time that students can work in a distance learning environment because the teacher will have set them up in groups and they'll be accountable for their group work and connecting with each other. It may be a time for extra help for our students that need that question or that assignment clarified. All of the assignments will be posted. So there will be a bit of independent work, but we're not going to lose students. We're not going to not be contacting them. And there'll be plenty of opportunity for them to engage with their peers. We're exploring some opportunities on Wednesdays to bring classes together. Maybe it's virtually, maybe it's part of a day. We're talking about, as I said, three Wednesdays in September. And we know, for example, that seniors on September 23rd will have an opportunity to be together as a cohort because we've arranged by their request and their parents' request the Connecticut SAT to be given that day. So we'll look for other opportunities to bring the students together virtually and as a class and find creative ways to do that on Wednesdays. I'll speak to the PD days at the end of the presentation. So grading, we have had a lot of questions about grading. And we want to stress, and we'll stress it here, we'll continue to stress it. That pass/fail option we used last year is not in effect this year. It was used last year because it came down from the state as an option that schools could consider. And given the speed at which we stopped going to school the way we knew it and then we tried to invent what distance learning looks like, we thought it was a fair system to allow students to work with their parents and select a pass/fail option. That is not the case right now. We are starting at this time with our normal grading system. It hasn't been changed, it will be standard letter grades. What did change, however, is that semester one is not going to be separated into formal quarters. So what I mean by that is in the past, parents and students who are used to Barlow know that somewhere in the middle of the semester, it usually falls in, I have the dates. So it normally would fall about 45 days into the semester, which is mid-November. We would have a quarter break and people would receive a report card. What's going to be happening now is that we will send a progress report home. And that progress report is going to have current grades on it. So it's not that we're not reporting grades or we're not giving grades. But the decision to not separate semester one into quarters was made mostly for the well-being of our students. If we're asking teachers to not give heavy-weighted assignments and assessments until October, and if we're really using those first few weeks of school to reestablish relationships with students, to check in on their well-being. We haven't seen these students since March. Many of our teachers haven't been back in the building since March. There's a need to give ourselves some time to acclimate, back to Barlow, back to learning. We were concerned that if we stayed with that quarter break, which is an arbitrary break in the quarter, in the semester, that we would put undue pressure or we'd skew a student's semester grade. Their first quarter may be based on grades that are going to be weighted as heavily as the second part of semester one. So we're going to still send a progress report home, but parents and students should not expect a report card. This doesn't impact a student's transcript. Quarter grades never appear on a transcript. It really is only the semester grade. And then we'll still have an exam at the end of semester one. And we have not changed semester two. So this is just for semester one in our hybrid plan. Many parents have asked about a supply list. And so that supply list will be shared by administration in a general way. And then it will be shared very specifically by individual teachers. The biggest point, I guess I would like parents and students to hear right now, is that we're not making lockers available. So we really encourage students not to get big bulky binders, but maybe use either a laptop they're going to take to school with them or a single notebook that they can go back and forth to school that makes their backpack a little bit more manageable. We'll look at ways in the school to leave some supplies in rooms where it's appropriate or leave textbooks at home. So that supply list will be coming out, like I said, in general. It reminders from administration about doing things like bringing a second mask, having your own pens and pencils, and then some specific requirements from teachers. In the Fine and Practical Arts, this information was just shared with our teachers yesterday. Well, today is Tuesday, it must have been yesterday. And it's some guidelines that we've been waiting for for the state. And it has to do with how we will safely have students singing and playing their instruments. How will we have them participate in wellness, whether they're indoor or outside? And what's the student's responsibility in wiping down their equipment? If they're using the fitness center or the shared equipment, their music stands? So more information, this full protocol write-up will be posted in each location. And our teachers have just begun the work on what will the implementation of these protocols look like? How might they have to modify what they're teaching and how they're teaching? So I don't have a lot of details to share here, but we will definitely be publishing more information as we go. And then athletics. If we were sharing this presentation last week, I would have been sharing a very different plan with you. What has been happening, if you followed it all, I am not going to go through the details of what's on again and off again. But what's important for the community and the board to know right now is that all programs are on pause. So that includes conditioning, it includes all of our teams. We are on pause because the C I A C and the Department of Health are together drafting a plan for the reopening of sports. I know the board has asked us several times about this. We're going to talk about it in our next agenda item as well. But as soon as the plan is announced of what sports would look like, we'll be sharing it with the board and then with the community as well. So for right now, we don't have a sports program taking place at Barlow. You may be driving by Barlow and saying, how is that possible? Because you may see people in the fields practicing. Those are club leagues that have rented the Barlow fields. They're not our Barlow teams that are coached by our program. And that brings us to our important dates slide. And you will see that we have two Zoom meetings scheduled. And one of those meetings, and all of these links were shared with the board and posted on the website for the public to see as well. Tomorrow night at 7:00, there'll be an opportunity to share thoughts with administration on what you're hearing tonight, what questions are still lingering, knowing that our teachers haven't re-entered the building yet. So a lot of the planning that we're going to be doing with our teachers is taking place in small groups with curriculum funds. And then will take place at the beginning of September in those four days when teachers are revisiting their curriculum. But if you have questions, you want to share thoughts, I would welcome them. There'll be a special education town hall Zoom. We have a new special education director. And we thought that this would be a wonderful opportunity to meet Mr. DiStefano and have him share some of his background and meet some of the parents of the students with special needs and share their thoughts and their needs. You might have seen me distracted a moment ago because I think there was a slide that didn't get presented. And I don't know how it dropped out of the slide deck. But it had to do with our students with special needs and how we'll be helping them navigate this hybrid distance learning plan. And basically, I guess the takeaway is they have case managers and their case managers will be following students, even students who are temporarily learning from home. The case managers will be reaching out. And then Mr. Di Stefano will share with the group on Thursday, I some a new guideline that that was just put out yesterday. It's a new form that if the time on an I E P needs to be modified and and there's a special form that will be shared with those parents that the school will fill out. We are having tours for our new students. They can sign up. They have been signing up. These will be student led tours and it will be on on Thursday, the twenty seventh and Friday, the twenty eighth. And then I wanted to just take a moment to explain what will be happening at Barlow from September first through September fifth. These are full days for our faculty and our staff. And we will be putting forward a schedule that our faculty and staff will be following. It will involve some administratively planned events. So we know we have protocols, we have training, reopening details, questions and answers that our staff and teachers have been asking us. This will also be the time when we could be exploring guest speakers to come in. We're we're looking right now at a speaker to talk to our teachers and staff about recognizing trauma and some strategies in how to help our students and and own their own self care in navigating these very uncertain times and very anxious times for all different reasons for for all of us. We will be looking for department chairs and instructional leaders to schedule some of these four days. They'll be doing things like material distribution. We have I the when we left in March, books were brought back to the school and we did a a hero's job in trying to figure out how we get all of that material back to teachers. So some of this will be the nuts and bolts of how will teachers start their year with the materials that they need. We'll, they'll be looking at curriculum, they'll be looking at instruction and assessment. And then there's a whole bunch of that time that needs to be used for professional development and for training. So using platforms like Zoom, using Flipgrid, exploring different programs our teachers have seen as they have done some professional work over the summer and sharing that work with their colleagues. Again, questions and answers. And so it will be a busy, full week. We have a draft of what that week will look like and we are filling in the details. Week one, you can see begins with our different cohorts. And on September eleventh, which happens to be Friday, we will go forward with our Peter Burton Hansen Award recipient. And our ceremony, we'll be inviting the board members back in. So many of you have been there in the past and it is a wonderful ceremony. Because we can't invite the full community in, we will be live streaming that and also recording parts of it so that our community can participate in that. It's just a wonderful ceremony, a tribute to our fallen heroes, a look forward at some amazing students who have been recognized for this. And I mentioned the Connecticut SAT on September twenty third. So with that, I will be glad to answer questions that you might have. And knowing that I can't give every detail because I we've been doing this just as the leadership team. We've had an optional faculty meeting time and more than than half of the faculty came, it was it was really wonderful. So as we present and we can add more and more to it, we will we'll share that information. I think the only thing I'm looking at my notes here that I didn't talk about is the you talk about nuts and bolts, right? The specific due dates for summer reading and all of that summer work, since we're starting a week later, everything is due later. So I know I had a question, a parent, and I answered it specifically to that parent who had asked. But as we share in our summer mailings, at the end of the week, parents will know that that the summer work and the summer reading has also been postponed.
All right.
All I've got.
Yep, thank you, Dr. Penn. I'll open it now for board members and again for the public. This is a board member question time. There will be time for public as Dr. Penn said, we've got a town hall coming up tomorrow and another one on Thursday. So there will be opportunity for members of the public to to interact. And always you can send questions to board members, et cetera. Go ahead and questions, I think I saw Mike first, he had the first hand up and then Mary Lee.
Mary, you can go first. Go ahead, Mary.
What a gentleman you are. Thank you, Mike. So I guess I just have a question as to whether we've gotten any guidelines as to how to handle when, sorry, not when, if a student has a confirmed COVID case.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Yeah, we do. So there has been some additional guidance from the state that was released last week. And our nursing coordinator is updating the health flow chart that is in the original reopening plan with this more current information. And I don't want to misquote it, but she is analyzing those revisions and they will be integrated into the the latest version of the reopening plan, which we hope to get out to families on Friday. But we will also post all of the addenda that have been released from the state to date. And one of them explains just the procedure that you're asking about.
So as you get new information, you're just going to keep posting it?
We will. It it is released almost on a daily basis now. So we will continue to share.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mike, go ahead.
I have several questions. I'll just fire them off and then
Could I could I ask you a question, Mike? Or can you ask one question at a time? Because then I could respond to it. Sometimes I feel like I'm not answering your question.
Happy to do it that way.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so first question. Basically, if I'm reading your numbers correctly, like twenty five percent of the parents have responded to this to the survey, is that correct? It had like twenty four percent each grade level. Is that twenty four percent of each grade level? And overall, we're like twenty five percent? Or is that how many from each grade level of the overall? Because that was kind of a confusing slide, so.
Yeah. And actually, Mike, I wouldn't have even put that in there because it is outdated as soon as I put it in. There's a new survey that the results are coming back Wednesday, I believe, right, Stephanie? So all of those numbers you saw don't, it it won't matter. It was twenty five percent of the people who responded, but we're hoping to get the next three hundred people. We 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 had five hundred and fifty four respondents. We know we have eight hundred and thirty nine students at the time, at this time. So we are missing several hundred voices. And we're hoping we'll get more of them in the next survey.
Okay, so those twenty five percent numbers were were outdated. So I guess my my concern is that there's three weeks, three, three and a half weeks before school, we need to know what everyone is doing.
Yes, this is true, Mike. We need to know.
Respond. And then all of a sudden, you find out that seventy five percent or eighty percent of all the people who didn't respond are doing something that you haven't planned for. So I would, my question is, do we have a plan to address or reach out to students or parents who have not responded to surveys so that we have an accurate number or projection? Knowing that parents can change their minds, but we still need to have a pretty accurate, you know, projection going in or else it's difficult for us to be able to function, I would I would assume.
Yes, absolutely. So we we will wait for these next survey results. We will then compile the list and find out which voices we're missing. And we have plans in place to actually make calls, reach out by phone call, by email and and figure what each student are doing. Knowing exactly, as you said, parents can change their mind. But when they do change their mind, we're asking them to fill out a Google form so we can make sure the classroom is ready for those students to return. And then they have to give us some time in busing if they want to opt back into busing.
Right.
So, yes.
Okay, so that's number one. Thank you. So the second one, I'm a little concerned about the hallways. Can you tell me how wide the hallways are? I'm I'm going to guess they're they're not wider than eight feet. They're probably more like seven feet with the lockers in in place. So if 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 the hallway is seven feet and if a high school student's body is, say, well, a little leaner than my body, which is probably two feet wide. But let's just say it's it's a foot and foot and a half wide. So so now you're down to, I I guess what I'm wondering, how are you going to safely have students passing each other in a seven foot hallway? Unless they're all being told to, you know, bang again, like hug the lockers to be able to keep. Even if you hug the lockers, you're really still going to have barely three feet in the middle. I I'm a little concerned about that. And and I understand that we want to give them a great experience. And and I I understand this is challenging. And and I don't want to go into it yet, but at some point I will probably mention that, you know, we're transitioning to all in, but we may be transitioning to all out depending on what happens. Things that have happened in North Carolina and in Georgia and some of these places that have opened and they've shut down really quickly. And obviously, our numbers are great and we're hoping for the best. And we want it all to work out. But I I still think I err on the side of caution. So I guess I'm a little concerned about the hallways. And I wonder if you could speak to that, especially if unless we're are we staggering kids as they go by? Because it just seems to me like that's really going to be a a challenging situation with students. You know, because they're not going to hug the lockers. They're all going to walk in the center, you're banging at the shoulders as they're walking down the hallways. And that seems like that might be problematic. So if you could speak to that, that would be great.
Sure. And and actually, you're you're spot on in our in our places that we are concerned about students. It is lunchrooms, it's hallways. So at this point, we aren't staggering the dismissal of classrooms because that would mean students would have to be waiting outside of other classrooms. So our students would, they might all be congregated outside of B some B one oh five because that class hasn't dismissed yet from A one oh seven. And so we, it doesn't mean that we're not going to explore a different path. But for right now, we ruled out the one way hallways because we thought it also encouraged students to walk next to each other, walking down the hallway. So it encouraged students to walk as they do now, where there there may be three or four friends and they're together and they're all walking down the hallway. Having a a delineation in a hallway and really stressing with students that it's it's about safety. We think that students will more likely walk just one down the hallway, maybe two, a friend, you know, behind them or closer to them. But we don't think we'll have the clumps of students. If we see that we are, we will have to change direction and go back to our one way hallways. But we're hoping to really start on a very positive note and and have our students realize that we're not just trying to be mean and nasty. We're trying to figure this out just like they are. One of the options we're thinking about is not ringing bells. And that may give us that staggered departure from a class because different teachers would not be, as soon as the bell rings, everybody's leaving at the same time. But protocols like when a bell rings or the class is over, all the students will be going out the door at the same time. We may need to advise our teachers to have the students walk one person through the door at a time so they're giving themselves some more room. So these are things we thought about. Right now, we're starting with two way hallways. It doesn't mean that's where we're going to be the third week of September.
Okay.
You're also only have half the kids and masks on.
Correct.
So then, a daily cleaning of the buses. That my read on that is so they're they're cleaned at the end of the day as they go into the bus depot. And then they're clean in the morning and they come in and then they're going to do all the bus runs throughout the entire day and then clean them again when they go back to the depot. I understand there is a cost associated with cleaning the buses. I I know I did see one district that's going to clean the buses after each bus run. Again, I understand that's more challenging and and more costly. But I'm slightly concerned that, especially, you know, knowing that the seats are vinyl, so the virus can can live, you know, quite a while on that surface. I'm slightly concerned for exposure given, you know, those afternoon runs or after lots of kids have touched those seats. So I I would hope that even, you know, that that as well. We maybe we think about that and see, obviously, if there's three kids on a bus, it it's a whole different story. But if there's, you know, thirty kids on the bus. And again, what what is deceiving is there could be three kids on the high school bus, but the same bus is used for the middle school and the elementary school runs that could have thirty thirty kids on them and then they come back. So I'm I'm a little cautious about the buses. So I hope we would, we would kind of look at that. The other question that I have relates to, and maybe this is more for Scott, but we're doing portable HVAC systems, we're doing lots of other things. I think we're going to talk about other revenue streams tonight. And and I'm concerned because I have not been under the impression that the hybrid approach or the all in approach is going to be more cost efficient than our normal school operating would be. And so I'm wondering where the funding for these additional items is coming from. And and again, I have confidence in you. I just, I just, it begs me to ask the question that, you know, it's we're planning that it's coming away from something that we're not doing or something that we don't need because of, you know, the pandemic situation and not that at the end of the school year, we're going to be over budget or over what would be typical.
When we went through in the joint boards meeting, and I can't, I apologize, I can't recall the timing of it. I think it may be in at the back end of July. We had reviewed a a projected estimate of costs that would be associated at that time with the all in model. As that was what we were planning on at that time. Many of the labor costs are really all of the all of the labor costs with that model were estimated on a ninety day period, which was a middle of the road estimate, not knowing how many days we would be in this sort of model as opposed to a business as usual model. Could be longer, could be shorter, as well as a number of estimates for other things that were estimated both from an instructional standpoint as well as a a building and facility standpoint, things like tents, outdoor tents, for example. And my review of those with each of the boards at that time was, I think we, I think that this year, at least as it stands now, has the possibility to be fairly fluid in regards to our instructional models, which implies fluidity on our costs as well. So I don't have a direct line of sight to be able to say every dollar that we're spending now would be offset by some reduction elsewhere. But rather that what I would do Uh, but rather that what I would do and recommend to do is to keep an eye on it as we move through, uh, particularly the fall. And I would say that as we approach, uh, the January timeframe, we're gonna have a much better opinion at that time about what our actual financial posture is. What are some of the ways in which the hybrid model would save us money? Uh, one of those is we wouldn't run buses on one of five days, that should translate to a twenty percent savings in, uh, transportation costs. And then there may be others as well. There may well be other labor costs that are offset on a four-day schedule versus a five-day schedule. I know it would reduce certainly in some degree the estimates that were put together, because the estimates were put together for, uh, an all-in model as opposed to a hybrid model, so some reduction of cost would, uh, exist there. But broadly speaking, too soon to tell is sort of my watchword on this, and I think we really need to see how things develop.
Right. No, that, that's helpful, and, and I, I knew that we had given it great thought, and it was, you know, uh, asked more so that, you know, the public realizes that a lot of thought went into this, and that, um, the additional items are, are somewhat marginal, they're, they're not, uh, you know, significant, uh, um, outlay above and beyond what we would normally, uh, be doing, so I just, I just wanted that out there so that, you know, these additional items, um, we feel are, are not gonna impact us, you know, as we get towards the end of the school year, and that, that's actually our hope, or else we will, uh, revise things as we go along. So, that's fine, that, that, that is helpful as well, and uh, the last thing really, um, is Gina, you mentioned professional work over the summer with teachers. I'm, I'm just wondering, again, is this uh, originally budgeted professional work, is this additional professional work? Can you kinda speak to that, is this, uh, above and beyond what we had in the budget relating to, uh, you know, curriculum work or whatever, I, I didn't think there was a lot of professional work that went on during the summer, and I wonder if you could kinda speak to that and how we're funding that?
Sure, so, so every summer in our budget, we put in, um, you might see it as, as curriculum writing time, that groups of teachers get together, and, um, that's typical for us. Sometimes that work is done throughout the school year, but most often it's the very end of the fiscal year, so usually after graduation and before July 1. Teachers would get together, they'd review curriculum, they might make, um, some changes at that point based on what went on in the previous year. That did go on this year, and, um, for some teachers, it was let's leave this session with a couple of units that we know will translate well if we start the school year and then have to immediately go into a distance learning. So there was some of that work that went on with, with teachers looking unit by unit, are there, drop-in, uh, units that, that would, um, be applicable? Work like our counseling department, they work every year, our school counselors, and they put together some wonderful programming. This summer, they got together to do that work again, but they did it with a slant of what will our staff and what will our students need, um, in coming back to Barlow? When we have a situation, and let me just stay in the counseling department for a moment, where, um, I felt like they needed an extra day to do that work, we budgeted two days to do their normal work. That's when we contact Central Office and Stephanie and the curriculum money that she puts aside for, um, work for Barlow teachers. And, um, in this case, she was able to fund through her budget, her budget lines, another day for our counselors. So we haven't gone over in the budget that we've allocated for teachers to do this work. But we are looking forward, not just for those four days, but then on the Wednesdays, uh, in September, when, uh, we have our teachers together and some dedicated time that we really want them to dig in with their colleagues, to look at distance learning and develop those units and those plans, so that we know, uh, when and if we go all out, the teachers are in a much better place, much more familiar as they are right now with the technology, and, um, and our students are ready, and they know their expectation, because it, it will look very different. So it, it's no extracurriculum money, Mike, but we do put in curriculum, we do put in PD, we've had teachers participate in, uh, different workshops over the summer, most of them have flipped to virtual platforms instead of their in-person conferences, um, but that's the work I was referring to.
Thank you.
Okay, other, thank you, Mike. Um, other board members, I have a couple of questions as well, but, um,
I have some.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead, Cheryl.
Um, just, uh, just I have three questions, so with respect to the grading, the semester one grades, for seniors who may be applying to colleges in November before semester one ends, what grades will be provided by the school to those colleges?
That actually was the, the real, um, impetus to make sure that we are pulling a progress report with real grades on it. So, um, it, it, Paula Panos, our Director of School Counseling, has been in touch with colleges. There are colleges, there are high schools that are on a trimester, and so they don't have a formal report card. Um, and so we're getting samples of what that progress report would look like. Our progress report would be that snapshot of student performance. Our, um, teachers, especially teachers of seniors, will know that. Paula will keep an eye on, on, on what that report looks like, and that would be sufficient for a college, especially for the students that are applying early action. I'm just scanning, and I do see that Paula is here, I don't know if she wants to add any detail to that, but as I understand it, that progress report would be an adequate substitute.
Yeah, I, I would agree, Gina, um, we've done a lot of research, we've been reaching out to colleges. Initially, we were feeling like, wow, we really should have had, you know, a first-quarter grade, but as we spoke to colleges, um, they have assured us that so many high schools are doing things so differently that this is gonna be a very unique year in terms of college admissions. And I will be writing on our school profile, what we did in the spring of March, and what we're doing in the fall this year, so that colleges can understand what our students were up against and what were the protocols that we used. So I think that we'll be in a good place to be sure our students are presented in a, a fair mindset with the colleges.
Okay, so that means their official transcript that they had at the end of their junior years will also be provided in conjunction with the, the quarter, progress reports, or whatever we want to call them, the progress reports, right? Yeah, okay.
Right, I think that it's gonna be very important that our school profile really explains what the district chose to do in terms of grading. The pass/fail option will be explained, and we'll explain that we're going with semester one grades only, and that the progress report is a snapshot in time for students' progress.
Got it, okay, thank you. The second question is with respect to using the, the tents for outdoor classes and/or lunch, so I think there, I know the, the presentation was very helpful in saying that we wanna give the teachers discretion to be able to use, you know, when they log on, stay on Zoom, would that, would that same discretion be applied for when they can use a tent for outdoor classes? And same thing with question with lunch, if there, if we'll be use that, those tents for lunch as well, or other activities for that matter?
Right, so, um, the use of the outdoor, um, areas, uh, and we have several of them. We know, to the greatest extent possible, wellness will be using our outdoor areas the most, and will be, uh, conducting classes outside as much as, as they can. We have other areas, and we're working on what does that system look like? We have so many fields and, and beautiful acreage in the school that a teacher who wants to take students outside, um, for a mask break or just to breathe fresh air, uh, should be able to do that. We are working on how that tent is going to look during lunch. Personally, something, uh, Jen Damaris, Julie McTagg, and I have been thinking a lot about is how we can, um, give seniors something special, they won't have their senior annex, and does that lunch area get to be an outdoor lunch if you're in the senior class? So we'll work with the students as well, because I think their voice is missing from, uh, a huge equation in, in this, and see what, um, what they would like to do, but we envision some kind of sign-up area or sign-out area for our classes and for our students, um, to, to do. We know that that, um, streaming, and I don't know if I mentioned it during wellness classes, it's gonna be very difficult for the cohort that is not in front of the teacher to participate in the outdoor wellness instruction, because our, our Wi-Fi isn't going to reach to the track, so that, the wellness department will need to spend a lot of time making sure that what's posted on Google are, um, some really good directions, maybe videos, maybe, um, other, um, assignments that students could do, because they won't have, uh, access necessarily to the entire livestreamed class.
And I guess the final thing is with respect to Zoom, so they, I think Google Classroom are using for assignments and then, you know, rubrics and things like that, but the Zoom will be for the actual classes. Is there gonna be a policy or is it teachers' discretion on whether or not students that are distance learning that day, or distance learning the whole time, are required to keep their cameras on?
Yeah, actually, that, that is an excellent question, we are in the works right now in coming up with our protocol for our high school students in how they're going to use Zoom. And, um, that's a big piece of it, the camera is on there, um, we know that for some students, the bandwidth could be an issue, so we want them to communicate with us, if there's a reason they need to shut their camera off because they're, they're freezing, you saw it, Cheryl, Cheryl, when we had the curriculum right, and we had the students, and the one was texting me frantically, I keep, you know, I, I have to shut off my camera. So we'll make those protocols clear, and that's another piece that was missing from our distance learning equation in March when, when we just left, and we're working on, on what that would look like.
Okay, thank you, I'm all set, I'm all set, Todd.
Thank you, other board members, Karen, I see your hand up.
I just have a quick question about the, the morning arrival. There doesn't seem to be a lot of wiggle room there with regard to the times, everybody's getting off buses, out of cars, up to the building. It seems like it's gonna be a kind of a mad scramble right now, I mean, I, I know there's only gonna be half the students, so that's gonna be less, but a lot more cars is what I sort of envision it looking like, and them trying to get down the same driveway with the buses, is there gonna be a different entrance for the student drivers? And parents waiting to drop off? I just, explain that to me.
Yeah, I, I'd love to give you the details, and, and, uh, that is, um, one of those, we have to see how the drop-off works. We know with confidence that our buses come in at seven and they're gone from the property by 7:10. That's what it's been, um, uh, they're, they're out, some are out by 7:02. So that part, I think, will work well. The unknown is, uh, the number of parent cars, it's one of the reasons we want all the parents using the bus loop. Because then a parent can drop off their student, and there's a sidewalk for the student to be on. They're not going to be walking through the parking lot where teachers are arriving, they'll get out of the car and onto a sidewalk and walk into the building, so, that's a, that's a big departure, and we'll have human beings there, not just signs directing, um, parents to that. There's a fifteen-minute window of that drop-off before students are officially or technically late for school. So we do have parents, um, Jen, Julie, and I could probably tell you who they all are, because we're at the doors in the morning, who they drop that student off at 7:29, and the kid makes it to first-period class, running through the hallway. So parents themselves stagger their drop-off time. Our student drivers are in the back of the school, so they're not where the parent loop is. And there's a separate entrance, separate driveway for them, um, and so-
Down that main driveway, they'll be coming in the back?
Right, so a concern I do have is, um, the number of parents dropping off students and the Barlow Drive, um, Route 58, uh, Black Rock Turnpike entrance, it could be those beautiful cobblestones. There, there'll be a lot of cars stopped on them, because the traffic in the morning is, um, is difficult to maneuver, so we've been in, in touch with the Redding Police, and I know Central Office says every school is having the same concern of the increase in parent drive, parents dropping off students, and what that will look like, um, on our exits to school, so we'll have to wait and see, and, and see how we can ease that congestion for parents.
Thank you.
All right, another board member. I have a couple of questions. Um, while the members are thinking, other ones, um, for the, um, Wednesday, when everyone's out, I, I still have concern, and I know we're still developing our, our plan for that Wednesday and what's gonna happen there, but i- it seems like it's still fairly unstructured. So I'm, I'm concerned about the students, you know, if you don't have office hours or anything like that, that could be a, a full day, that the students aren't really getting any instruction. So I know as we're trying to think through and how to make that work, um, that, that we continue to look at what's happening there, and if the kids have connection with the teacher, or, you know, uh, not necessarily a forced, uh, session, but if, if there is something as opposed to just, it's optional, check in if you want to as a student, to get extra help, um, it, it just seems, you know, there's, there, we're gonna have an extra void in that, that day, potentially. Um, and then I'm also a bit concerned on, uh, and again, it's something we can, we'll probably work through as we develop more details, but for the, the students, um, that are remote as they're, um, on the Zoom call, and they check in, uh, after that, I think you mentioned it was kinda at this, the teacher's discretion as to how long the student needs to be on. So again, that, that concerns me, I understand if, you know, it, it's gonna be hard for the student to participate, uh, when they're on a Zoom session, the teacher is instructing everyone in the actual classroom, and how do you answer questions? But again, I'm concerned if the teachers, you know, decide the persons, the students checked in in the morning, and then they don't have to be on the rest of that class period, that there's really not a lot of student-teacher contact happening, right? So, uh, again, as we work through this, you know, um, you know, and we're working through the protocols of what's happening in the online, or when they're on the Zoom session, uh, that hopefully we can work something out there, uh, as best as we can with, with the technology, that again, it's not the kids checking in in the morning, and then they're off, and, you know, they're really not getting a lot of interaction with teachers over the, the several days. And I know, I, I, I know we're gonna talk athletics here on the next item, so I won't ask any questions a- about that. But I do appreciate all the work, uh, Dr. Penn and, and the team has done in providing more detail, and answering a lot of the questions, I know the public's been asking, the board members and myself, so I do appreciate you taking another pass at this and adding more details, and I know we'll continue to do that as things evolve, so I do wanna thank you uh, on behalf of the board for doing that. Any other board members, any other questions around this, and, and I know I see a couple of hands up from the public? But for board members, any, any other questions people have? Or else I'll move on to our next topic, and again, for the public, um, as Dr. Penn said there, again, there, um, I, I think this, the schedule that you had, Dr. Penn, are you gonna publish that up? Cause I know there, there were, you know, it was a good summary, um, of what's, what's happening on the calendar over the next couple of, uh, weeks, so.
We, that is all on our website right now, and, and the links are there, and we will, um, the whole presentation will be posted on the web as well.
Okay, great, so again, for the public that's on or listening, there, there is a, a town hall session tomorrow for the high school, and then another one on Thursday, uh, for the high school for special, special needs as well. So there will be more items, and then more information as, as, as things evolve, and as the state guidelines change, and we make changes with them.
This is true.
So any, anything else, board members, any other questions on, on this topic? From the reopening, okay, so we'll continue to, to follow and, and get updates as things, um, you know, continue to evolve and change. I'm gonna then move to item, uh, 7B, um, discussion, possible action, uh, on athletics, and the activities, participation, participation fees and parking fees. So Dr. Penn, I'll turn it back to you, or?
You can turn it back to me, because what we're going to do is, I think you've heard my voice, um, long enough. You can turn it back to me because what we're going to do is I think you've heard my voice um long enough. So I've asked Julie McTagg to um share I the the document that that she really put together. I'd like to start with parking fees and um I'm going to share here and ask Mrs. McTagg to go through um. Is this large enough for people to see?
We always have to ask to.
I'm always making it a little bit bigger. So there you go. Um so I I will and and what I'll do. Julius, I'll kind of move it slowly as you are reading through and and explaining to the board what you put together here. So turn it over to Julie.
That works. Um and thank you. We really appreciate this opportunity to bring this information and have a conversation with you about the fee this year for student parking permits. So as you know, the fee for a student to purchase a student parking permit is set by the board and the fees that we collect, uh we use those to offset the budget. We always have and we continue to do so. Due to the decline um in the sale of our student parking permits for this year in designing the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one operating budget. We did reduce the offsets for the funds that we will be taking in from the from the sale of student parking permits. So I think you're familiar with the three different lines that we offset with parking fees, but I placed them there for you. It also allows you to see that the salary that we offset within maintenance. We reduced that line from twenty thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars for this next school year. And the line where we offset a security salary, we reduced that from fourteen thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars for this next year. And we kept the snow plowing services the same. So you can see that the total offset for this next year was reduced to thirty thousand dollars. It had been thirty nine thousand dollars for the past few years. So another thing we took a look at is exactly how many seniors and juniors we had last year enrolled at Barlow and how many we will have enrolled this year. And the numbers are close. They're close in total and they're close when you look at the two individual classes. And so we set up a table for you to see that that total offset for the operating budget of thirty thousand dollars. That was established by estimating a sale of twenty parking permits at that parking permit fee of a hundred and fifty dollars and it's been a hundred and fifty dollars for years and years and years. It hasn't been raised and it hasn't been lowered. So that was how we estimated that cost which we highlighted there and for the offset for this operating budget. And so I was trying to provide for your consideration what the collection of fees would be if the parking permit fee were to be reduced to a hundred dollars, seventy five dollars or fifty dollars. It was just there so we could quickly reference that. I also put in a column, uh were we to sell two hundred and fifteen permits or two hundred and thirty permits? So last year, even ending the school year early, we still sold two hundred and thirty one permits. Um and that was on the next page, you'll see each year it does go down, but that was in ending the school year early. So two hundred and thirty is also a conservative estimate and one that we used again for designing this year's operating budget. But on the second page, what I had provided for everybody to see and no Gina, if you could go back down again for just a second. There was some information there for you to look at just so that you could know how many parking spots we do have in the upper lot. The lower lot, which most people call the junior lot by the old tennis courts and then in the stadium. And I wanted you to see that for the last three years, while the percentage of students in the senior and junior class who are purchasing parking parking permits remained fairly steady, the actual number of permits sold did decrease. So Gina, if you go down just a little bit more, that's where you can see in the bottom that last school year, we sold a total of two hundred and thirty one permits. And the year before that was two fifty nine and the year before that it was two seventy one. But you can see the impact on the the collection of fees, the total collection of fees. And again, last year we did end early because the school year ended early. So Dr. Penn, if you go back up to the bottom of the first page. Again, what I did is I was then projecting out because there is a possibility that we could sell two hundred and fifteen or even two hundred and thirty given what our historical sales have been. But it's an important conversation. I mean, at the end of last year with the school year ending early, we had students who had purchased parking passes just weeks before the school year moved to distance learning. We had students who, of course, purchased their passes maybe in December thinking they had more than half the year that they would be parking at school. And so it wasn't, um you know, it quickly came to mind that in entering into this year, how students and families might feel about paying a hundred and fifty dollars for a parking pass that they may be using only two days a week in September. Um if we're all in and all in the rest of the year, then they would be in most of the time, but there's certainly that chance that we'll be in hybrid or we could be all out. And so how did we want to approach this year? And so we put down just three ideas. You certainly could have another one. Um but we talked about, do we have our students pay the hundred and fifty dollars to purchase a pass and then we see how the school year goes and this year return to it and consider reimbursing families based on the percentage of time that we end up spending in distance learning. Obviously, there's logistical challenges with that, but that's a possibility. Do we split it into two semesters? Do we require a seventy dollar fee to purchase a pass at the start of this fall? And then see how the fall goes. And once we get to close to the mid mid year point, we'll know what the fall has been and we'll be better able to project probably the spring and then determine what the fee might be to purchase that pass for the second half of the year or to continue your pass for the second half of the year. And then we said, well, we also could just start the year by reducing the fee and we certainly couldn't start the year and 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 we just hold the fee because truth be told, again, that fee is offsetting costs that are not likely to change. It's offsetting salaries and it's offsetting plowing. So even if we're in a hybrid, we still need to plow those parking lots so that students can use them. Even if we're not using the stadium lot because we're able to put all of our students in a hybrid in the upper lot. Our buses use that stadium lot and for safety reasons and all is on in addition to usage, we need to plow all three lots. So um really just trying to lay out some information that would help a conversation that we've certainly been having within the school building. And and wondering where where you might like to go with this.
All right, I will open it up then to board members for any discussion or if we want to put a motion on the table. I'm I'm not sure. I think probably needs a little bit of discussion before we get a motion out there. But Mike, um I think you had your hand.
Yeah, so the the pandemic kind of changes everything uh, you know, with regard to this fee. I know for many years I have heard the pleas of students saying that we're charging too much for a hundred and fifty dollars for the year and um you know, it's it's been that that price for a long time as Julie noted. And it's done, you know, again, to to offset some of the maintenance costs associated with the parking. Where where I differ this year is it's also, you know, uh part of the argument in the past has been, well, you know, you don't need to drive the school, you can hop on the bus and, you know, we we encourage students to take the bus. And that driving the school is somewhat of a luxury, you know, or or a a privilege to to be able to to do that as well. It's a little different this year because we're encouraging self-transportation, we're encouraging parents driving, we're trying to maintain uh lower numbers of students on the buses. So um it it is, it's it's slightly different uh in in that regard this year. I am sensitive to students that may pay a hundred and fifty dollars for the year. And then three weeks into the year, we find out that we're going distance learning and, you know, I mean, I I think that's a a difficult uh task in that regard because do you refund the money? And then that gets really complicated for the schools. So I'm wondering, uh I I see the the proposal, which is, you know, to to basically cut it in half and and kind of you know, pay for the first half of the year and and kind of see how that goes and and I like that approach in that if we end up where, you know, by, you know, some unfortunate uh circumstance that we're we're not in school for the whole, you know, three months, we're only in for for, you know, a month or however, you know, two months, whatever. It it does give us the opportunity in the second semester to kind of give students kind of a prorated uh price and and adjust how much more they would have to pay for the second half of the school year. Hopefully by that time we have a vaccine, everyone's cured and the whole thing goes away, but I I don't think so. But anyway. That's, I I like that approach that it gives some options because I do feel uh very sensitive to requesting students pay the hundred and fifty upfront and then I my hope would be that if if they didn't use it enough to warrant that fee that we would return it and I think that gets somewhat complicated for the school. So um I I appreciate the thoughtfulness that Julie has put into this and I I I do see some uh, you know, logic uh, some good logic in this approach.
I I think we should also have it to seventy five dollars and I think that that at least covers the plowing which is probably the, you know, major part of the upkeep of the driveway. And it seems fair based on the fact that there's, you know, limited, maybe limited driving for the kids, but also, you know, who knows what's going to come down in the the rest of the year.
As I also say, I've got a um a rising senior as well that was impacted and is not able to get his driver's license over the summer, right? So I think this is going to be again, um you know, a different year, right? We're not going to probably have as many drivers. Because people, kids weren't able to get their driver's licenses um then and be able to do the permit. And I also agree with Mike, I think there are going to be a lot of people opting for the the bus. And not opting for the bus, but opting for driving in. Um so I think the numbers are going to be skewed this year. So I like, I I think I'm, I I like the idea of splitting the fee, um not knowing what what's going to happen. And, you know, see as if we can get as much revenue as we can. But at the same time, just knowing the the population of drivers is going to be totally different this time than in the past. And Cheryl, I think you had your hand up.
Yep, I just have a question. If we if we went to, if we deferred the fee or didn't collect it, which is option number three, right? Reduce the fee for the school at this time. Um how would we know which students are using the parking lot?
Them to register, right? Just for safety reasons, we still need their registration. We need their license plate to know what cars are on campus. They'd still be getting a pass. We just wouldn't charge them.
Got it. Okay. I mean, I I I'm kind of, you know, I think the seventy five dollar fee is reasonable, but I could see on the other side, for those who do have their license, I have a rising senior and and a sophomore, so I have a so um that 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 will drive and would have drive even driven with that even with even without COVID. So I could see other people to the extent that they're either, you know, it's hybrid learning saying, well, wait a minute, I'm not getting, even if it's half a year, it's prorated, I'm only driving in two days of school. I don't know how many, I mean, it's seventy five thousand. It's nominal, but but I, you know, I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate for those parents and families that may be asking that. And then to the question of or the complication of the difficulty of refunding it. I mean, you know, it's it's a lot of work to refund a hundred and fifty dollars prorated. It's even more work to do it for seventy five because you exponentially use, you know, it's not even worth the benefit at that point. So you know, the one thing I I don't have an objection per se to seventy five, but I'm just raising, perhaps it might be better defer it to see how the first week goes along, but defer the fee later on to see how it the school year evolves, but
Deferring though, I mean, if we're saying the first four weeks is is sort of a trial period under the hybrid would be deferring for the first four weeks, collecting and then seeing what what happens.
Yeah, and not to necessarily prorate the fee, but just wait to collect it until we see what happens the first four weeks. And I I don't want, I would again, the complication per se of, okay, it's two days, but you know, again, just it just had against what what may happen or may not happen in the first four weeks.
Have to register, right?
Thing, you just have the administration up. It's more of trying to to prevent questions about re-prorated refunds and having to refund seventy five dollars if we have to go full, you know, all out.
Would that make it harder for you, Gina, to try to collect?
Collect a fee a month later.
And not just that, but try to know which kids are in the parking lot when they don't have to get a permit, you know, or would they still get a permit but then not pay for it?
So I think if they would need to register for safety reasons, we need all that information, especially for the length of four weeks. If it was a week, may maybe, but for four weeks, I think we would need, I know we would need that that registration information. We then need to know who's registered, which is why they have the decal on their windshield. And that helps security as they're coming in, know who's actually registered a vehicle and who hasn't registered a vehicle. So without that decal, that just makes that piece harder for us. But then, once we've given out the decal, trying to collect the funds, right? But I guess, you know, you just put out the call that then at this time, this is the amount that's needed. And if it is not submitted, then generally what we do is we put that fee into Power School. Right? Because if they, we do that with other, you know, please pay for your AP fee, please pay for your PCT fee. And then after a certain period of time, if it hasn't been submitted, we just entered into Power School as a fee that, you know, for a later time.
What if it were like a twenty five dollar deposit? So you're starting with at least because it's a lot of um your office time to do that and then.
Well, there is, I wonder if families would want to know what the fee will be prior to choosing to register their vehicle. Right? And receiving a decal. Because what if we do then is with, once they hear what the the cost will be and they say, well, I know no longer, I don't know, I just trying to think.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I wouldn't say just, oh, it's twenty five now. We'll tell you what it's going to be later. It would just be, you know, it's twenty five now pending what happens with our school year, you know, deciding we'll collect an additional. This might get too complicated, but you know, additional seventy five if we remain hybrid for the rest of the year, an additional, you know, hundred and fif- or twenty five if we go all in. You know, I I don't know if that makes it incredibly complicated or not.
I think that does make it more complicated to um to to manage. We are the idea of collecting seventy five dollars once and then saying we may collect another seventy five dollars depending on what spring looks like. And so what I think I hear you saying is, oh, and and I guess that's my clarification. Are you saying reduce the fee to seventy five dollars? Or are you saying just collect seventy five dollars uh after a few weeks of the school year and then collect another seventy five? I I'm not sure what I'm.
So I guess my question then would be, so it's seventy five dollars and and it, you know, it's seventy five dollars, okay? But most of these students are seniors and juniors, right? So do they typically, would it be uh fair to say that they typically have fees for either AP tests or other uh things that come close to costing seventy five dollars at least by the end of the school year that given, you know, if we if we uh collected the seventy five dollars, we can always make a decision later on to say we we collected seventy five dollars and the kids drove for eight days. And so, you know, we don't think that's fair, so we could just put it into their Power School or what, like they could use that for other.
It sounds like, it sounds like, right? Because we've thought that too on different things. Wouldn't that just be so, we'll just move it from here to here? But they're different accounts, so we actually then have to transfer the money.
I get that.
Messy.
Yeah, it gets complicated. You could say, okay, it's eighty two cents a day or eighty five cents a day, you know, or or twenty dollars a month. I mean, it gets really complicated if you try to do it that way. So I So I, I guess I'm still pretty much in favor of collecting the seventy-five. But again, knowing that if for some reason, you know, i- it, we collect it and and really they, they're, they're not in school long enough to warrant that charge, then I, I do think we have to figure out a way to refund. I, I mean, I, I don't see any other way around that other than, you know, I, it just, even though it would be difficult, I think we, that's the best of the worst case scenarios, um, is to, to do it that way to, you know, you could refund the, the money that way. And, and one thing I just wanted to ask, but I think I know the answer, but it's, it's important that we, we say this, which is that parking fees are very much like participation fees in that if there are hardship situations, especially given the pandemic and what's going on, um, we oftentimes take that into consideration and will waive parking fees for hardships, is that correct?
That's correct and we also work with students and families, in some cases, students are paying for their own parking permit, so they might give a monthly fee throughout the whole year as they're earning their money and they, they make good on that commitment. So we do work with individual students and families, given their situations um throughout the year.
With the, um, the same, you know, safety um and discussion happened that we normally do with the parking permit, so that, that, so that same program would happen or no?
No, we made a decision not to do the pre-parking safety seminar, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, thank you, remember the name of it.
Many of our seniors will have seen, many of the topics are discussed in our wellness classes. Many of the topics are discussed in our drivers ed, you know, the students' drivers ed classes. Um, and many students are having conversations with parents, so with everything this year and the inability to gather the way that we have before, um, we just decided that with all the priorities that since that goal was also being met in other ways, that we would not require that, nor did we want there to be another barrier to a student and family who's trying to secure a parking permit. Because it does slow down the process, right? So students who are in them able to attend, they do a makeup session, we really hold them to um, a pretty extensive forty-five minute, sixty minute um period of time with us and then we also follow through with the parent. And so that can delay getting a parking permit for a week or even ten days and that just doesn't fit this year's situation, we don't think.
And then would students be able to, um, so let's say people don't opt for the parking permit, we do this first four weeks, we're all good and then we go in all in. Would students then be able to apply and get a parking permit four weeks later, or is it just a window, you gotta do it right now?
No, we, we, we register students all year long, right? So on a rolling basis, it's the seniors are the ones that, the, the highest number of them, they both have their license and they have a vehicle. And that's a few of our juniors at the beginning of the year, I mean, it might not even be forty juniors in most, most cases and most years at the beginning of the year, but they're gradually getting their license and securing a vehicle. And to your point, I think the number of juniors who are able to look for their tests, right, I think they're behind in being able to do so because they're back off, right? So we might see fewer juniors entering even this year being able to. But one small shift is we were going to allow any sophomore, we do have a few sophomores that are, are older and may have their license and a vehicle. It's June, it's usually only for juniors and seniors, but we were going to allow sophomores to apply as well.
The other operational shift we're making is um to allow students to park from day one on, on campus. So normally, we give them a day or so and then say, if you don't have your parking pass, you can't be there. We really want as many students to um have that comfort of their own vehicle if that's what families choose.
When would you start to enforce the permits?
We make it very clear, I think if we are talking about um a, a window of time before we're collecting the fees, we'd make it coincide with that, so, to, to get the fees from every student.
All right, other questions, I think, um, so the ask is, is directionally from the board, how you would like us to proceed, so I'll, I'll put it to the board if anybody would like to put a motion out. Uh, Mike, I see your hand.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the administration's proposal to revise the parking fee, parking fee structure for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year.
To, to which structure, sorry? We have a couple.
Parking fee structure.
But which amount?
Which amount?
But, but what amount, sorry, I think, let me just declare, are you looking for amount and timing, I think?
I thought the administration's proposal said seventy-five dollars and it's.
People different.
We, we actually didn't make a proposal, we, we just gave you information.
So the, the seventy-five dollars um for the first semester.
So move to amend the parking fee to seventy-five dollars per semester or just for the first semester?
No, first semester.
For the whole year, we were talking about seventy-five dollars, that's what I thought.
No, I thought we were talking about we, we, we pay half and half based upon what happens during the school.
So, all right, so it's your motion though, so seventy-five dollars in each semester, so twice collecting the seventy-five.
Yeah, I wasn't of the opinion that, that we were going to reduce it to seventy-five for the whole year, was that one of the proposals, I? I get these things at the last minute and it's very difficult to kind of go through them all.
I think the proposal though, um, is seventy-five for the fall and determine what we do in the spring, I think was the option on the document.
Okay, so yeah, I like that one.
So it's seventy-five and then figure out what it is or seventy-five, seventy-five, however you want to do it.
Yeah, seventy-five and then, and then we.
All right, so move and parking fee structure to seventy-five dollars for semester one um, and revisit parking structure for spring semester?
Yes. Yes. Which may mean we eliminate it, it may mean it's seventy-five, it may, you know, based on circumstances.
Correct. All right, so there's a motion, Julie, do you have it, do you want to?
All right, we're going to amend parking fee structure to seventy-five dollars for semester one and revisit the fee for spring semester. That's it? That's what we want to go with?
Think so, Mike, is that? You good with that, Mike?
Fine, I, I, like I said, I apologize, I should have looked at these, but I, I didn't get them until late in the afternoon and I, I had a meeting before this, so I didn't really get to look at it, but um, I thought there was only one, but yeah, yes, so it's fine, seventy-five.
And then revisit later, all right, now, we have a second for the motion. Second by Marine, thank you. All right, further discussion on the motion.
I just think that adding another seventy, I know you, you continue to register cars throughout the year and that's not the issue. At registering new cars, but I think trying to collect another seventy-five dollars might just be a difficulty, I don't know, from kids who already have a permit, unless you're doing two different types of stickers, a spring semester.
Yeah, that's what I think is with you, Karen, I, 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 I do like this idea, quite honestly, um, it allows us, it's almost, um, you know, Mary Lee, what you're saying, it's almost like a deposit, like they're giving us some money and then we'll be able to see, if we're very fortunate, we're able to be all in and we're projecting we're going to be able to be all in in the spring, then requesting another seventy-five dollars may, might make very good sense. And if we haven't been in um school as much as we would have hoped and then it's not looking like we'll be able to be in school, then not asking for another seventy-five dollars makes sense, I actually don't think it will be that difficult for students to need to come to get their sticker for the spring. And they'll put it right next to the sticker that they use for the fall and so I, that does not give me the angst that delaying four weeks or five weeks to see how it goes and collecting or reimbursing the, the logistics with that for me are, are many more than, than requesting the money again for your second sticker.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion? All right, seeing none, then I'll call a question, so the uh motion is again, collecting the parking fee of seventy-five dollars for the first semester and then reevaluating what we'll do in the spring. All right, all in favor, say aye, raise your hands. Looks like everyone. So it looks unanimous, I think. Our time seeing everybody on the, the windows moved around on the Zoom, but I think I got everybody, so I think it's unanimous, look that way to me. All right. Okay, um, so while we're on this topic on fees, um, we didn't talk too much on the activities or participation fees. So do we have a, um, an administration recommendation a- at this point on what we're doing on those fees?
So we don't have a recommendation um to change the participation fees. We can share some data with the board if you'd like to consider changing those fees. We can share historical and, and current information if you'd like, but we are not recommending a change in that. We would only be collecting athletic fees if that team was participating. Our activities fees, our activities are going on, they've actually continued um through our distance learning. They've continued over the summer, um, and if, and so we, we don't anticipate changing that structure. But again, if you'd like, I could share my screen and just give you some data points, but we're not recommending anything change.
So the board members, anybody have questions or concerns with that approach?
No, I, I think that's fair, uh, I, I guess my question would be based upon the slide that said we're basically on a pause right now. So um, I, I would assume that we're pausing the, the fee right now as well, awaiting. And I would also encourage that we take kind of a similar approach uh when we start collecting the fees, because again, I, I think I have just as much uh compassion for an athlete that signs up for a sport and two weeks into the season, they say, no, you're, we're done. You know, they're kind of in the same spot as the, the kid who's bought the hundred and fifty dollar parking pass and everybody's learning from home, so I, I would, I would encourage if there's some way we can make that uh, you know, kind of assure students and, and, and participants that we're, you know, not going to collect the full fee and then if we're out, that they're going to lose their mu- money. I, I think that's somewhat unfair, so I'd, I'd like, you could speak to that, that might be helpful.
Why don't I invite Mr. Santangeli, our athletic director, to respond to that?
Well, Mike, I love that recommendation because that's exactly what we do, we are, we always wait a couple of weeks into the season. Usually not because the season's going to be potentially canceled, like, like we're dealing with these days. But generally, it's because we want to give, you know, athletes the opportunity to try out for a team, make the team before we actually get the money. So if, if they're, if, if they're cut from the team, it makes no sense to collect a fee. And on the other side, we like to give athletes at least a couple of weeks to see if they actually like the sport. So if they, they do leave the sport, um, we're not chasing them for, for their fee and, you know, we kind of give them that, that pass. So it's, it's something that we've been doing ever since we put the, the fee into, into practice. And um, people are always really good about getting the fees in when, when we require them. So we'll continue doing that right now, obviously, the, the season's paused, but it's paused to the twenty-fourth. So uh, we'll know on Friday, uh, just so everybody on, on this uh Zoom knows, on Thursday night, the Department of Health and the C I A C and various other state agencies are going to get together. They come out with some type of joint message for fall athletics. The C I C still of the mind that they want to have a fall season, but obviously um the views of uh Department of Health is, is, is a bit different, so they have to get to the table, kind of have the conversation. Long overdue con- conversation, to be honest with you, and then we'll see what happens, but we should know definitively what the plan is on Friday and then we'll go forward from there, I mean, there's a lot of options, so I'm too afraid to even give a prediction.
Oh, that's great and, and also just to give you the opportunity, uh, much like or, or similar to how we deal with parking passes, we also um take into consideration any hardships for uh athletes and participants of our various activities as well, so, you know. It's important to say, especially, you know, during this pandemic, there, there are um many people that, you know, are, are not you know, in the same place they were before it started and so it's important everybody know that we, we do take that into account.
Sorry, the, the sixty-five dollar fee was something that was implemented by the board, but sixty dollars goes to the participation fee. The five, five dollars is put to the side for anybody who has um financial, who requires financial assistance. So that's been built in by the board all along.
So, uh, Mike Santangeli, um, so you were saying by this Friday, the twenty-first is when we'll have an idea. So unfortunately, with our town hall tomorrow and the next one on Thursday, we're going to miss that window. So we may need to figure out another way to communicate how what, what's happening, what's not happening, so. We may do a special meeting or something.
Mike said he can make four phone calls and every athlete will know immediately. So it's a very good network and they're with our booster clubs, um, I, and, and our school mailings and listservs will, will get the word out.
Actually, I, I would love it if you could just send out one of those ER nine listservs, you know, and it could just say, it's on or something.
It's back.
That's the hope, Mike, that's the hope.
Okay, so more to come on athletics and what the fall season, it's on pause right at the moment. The um activities, participation fee, so again, whatever activities are happening in the fall, participate, the participation fee will be as is right now, the current amount, no changes there. And same thing in the athletic fee, once we know what's happening with the, the fall season. That fee will be the same, just to recount.
So just a clarification, Todd, on, on the participation fee, so if you're at clubs and, you know, so not, not, not athletics and not parking. So for um Murals Club, for example, right, we have that participation fee, to the extent that, that the kids are not in, in, in the school, right, in hybrids and they're just for a month, is that, could this partial fee be considered? Or is that, that's, are we kind of tabling that or is, we're just going to say you pay the twenty-five dollars or whatever it is and then that is what it is? Because there's a virtual component that perhaps to some of these clubs.
Sure, I can say for the, for the extracurriculars, it's similar to athletics and not like parking in that we give students time when they're coming into their fall semester, because they may try out murals and that's not really what they want, right? And then they try out react and so we wait until they, they find a club and then they really become a bona fide member of that organization. And we're checking in with the advisors throughout the whole year, who's on your roster as a bona fide member of that, that group. So we definitely have time, it's not the same exchange like with a parking permit where before we're going to hand over the sticker, we really need to collect your money or have a plan in place for um that money being submitted to us. So I definitely think we have time, but to Dr. Pin's comment earlier, many of our clubs are up and running even over the summer, virtually. With great anticipation for the fall and what they'll be able to bring to each other, to the school, to the community. So I think, again, those advisors, right, they will be receiving their stipends, they're doing their work and supervising and guiding their groups. But I would understand students need to get in and they need to feel those out both virtually and then to see if there will be an in-person component, whether or not they're going to continue with them, so I do think we have time to assess.
Okay, and actually, um, if I can, Todd, ask another question, you just, uh, maybe think of something else with respect to budgetary impact for the C I A C. I guess when the C I A C, the, the Connecticut Department of Health do finally get on the same page and communicate whatever, whatever they decide. I don't know if it's, if at this point, I mean, we're already committed to the stipends for the athletics, the teachers who are coaches as well as the non-teachers who are coaches, so, but I'm not sure if there's, if the C I A C.
So but I'm not sure if there's, if the C I A C and Department of Health decide that no, those, no fall sports, we're deferring everything to the spring. I don't know if we would have the opportunity to see to 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 have get savings on that impact or do, or we kind of just contractually lock the paying those stipends.
Maybe other other savings, so if a season is shortened, we would save in transportation, we budgeted, or umpires, or, you know, other um types of of savings there. But we would have to wait to see what it's looking like before we could give you a full um impact of what are the participation fees we collected, what are we spending, and and what's the impact on the budget?
Because if even if they say there's no season, but you can condition still, right?
Right, we'd still be doing something, but we, right, but there could be.
Yep.
And many of our coaches have been working all summer.
They have been, wonderful in keeping the spirits up of our students.
Okay. All right, so any any more discussion then on that item on athletics activities, participation, athletic fees, parking fees? Otherwise, we'll close that topic. All right, and we'll close that out and then we'll move on to item eight on the agenda, which is public comments. And so it looks like we have a few members of the public with us. So if you would like to speak, again, we ask that you uh provide your name, your address, limit your comments to two minutes. If you, again, it's not an open uh question um period, so it's more of a public comment. So if you're asking questions, the board members and administration aren't gonna be able to answer them, it's not part of how we do it here. And if you can, again, limit to two minutes. Cheryl, if you can help me look for anyone, there were some hands earlier, but they look like they've dropped them now, so. And then you either wanna wave in your window or raise the sim, the hand symbol, and if you're on mobile phone, you can do star nine. Star six to unmute if you're on mobile. Uh, it looks. Uh, we've, um, Beth Matt. Yeah, okay. All right, Beth, you're on, go ahead.
Sorry, guys, it's a little uh hard to get back on and off. So Beth Nat, Easton Road and East, sorry, Maple Road in Easton, Connecticut. First, a great job, I just wanted to say to Gina Pin and the rest of the team, it's really wonderful. Um, I will say, one thing that I continue to see missing in all of the plans that get put out there is how are you gonna deal with the an inevitable um number of kids that are gonna be sent home simply because of symptoms, but are going to be waiting for um test results or waiting to be cleared by pediatricians, or simply just waiting the ten days, totally capable of doing schoolwork, yet just having to be at home. There needs to be a really, really well-thought-out plan for allowing kids not up until October second, but after October sixth second to go back and forth between the distance learning and regular learning, because a lot of these kids are gonna be totally fine and just literally just gonna be waiting out time until they can get back home. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else from the public? Uh, it looks like Jonathan.
Yeah, it's not, it's my boss's name on the account. Even though he took the account away from me. Comment for tomorrow night, can we add a sentence or two about the junior writing portfolio? And how that may work or not work? And the timing of when that's due in relation to exams, because in the past, it's been too close, in my opinion.
All right, it looks like Dr. Pin and Dr. Pierce Newville taking some notes on that, so, okay.
I don't have a name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tracy Kulikowski, seventy-three Drummer Lane Reading.
All right, great, thank you. Any other comment? Nope, great, okay, thank you. Uh, anyone else from the public? Scanning through and show if you can help me scan, other board members can help me scan, I don't see any hands. All right. All right, so we'll go ahead and close that item out then. Then we'll move on to item nine, board member comments. Any board members like to comment? All right, I know you're all just stunned because we're ending very early.
I was gonna, how much I I would have to, you know, uh, say to get us to eleven o'clock, but I figured, you know, now it's.
Exactly, we have a few more nights of meetings, so we appreciate that, thank you. All right, any any other board member comments?
I just wanna thank the staff again for their, you know, their diligence and providing information and the board members for hanging in there with all these long, late calls on Zoom. So everybody's been really engaged and thank you.
Yes, second that, I think all the board members were clapping for that, so yes, thank you again. Uh, as you continue to figure things out, as things continue to change and presenting information out to the board and to the public, we do appreciate all that. And I'll get one final plug in again, tomorrow night is the town hall, right, for uh for Barlow and then Thursday night, uh, seven o'clock, right, for both. And the Zoom or the, I guess it's Zoom meeting link is on the website, the school website for people?
Yes, and it also was um emailed to home.
And emailed out to everybody.
E R nine website, yep, and on the calendars.
Great, so more information coming over the next two days and.
Correct.
Even after that.
Say it again, I'm sorry?
Did they announce that meeting on that parent's Facebook page? I think there's a Facebook page.
I don't monitor that, but I do, in fact, I have a meeting tomorrow with the P T S A and normally they pick up um these blasts and then they um make sure that it's it's out on pages, so.
And I know.
And there there are recession town halls for the other grades, other buildings as well, right? So these are just the ones we're announcing here for the high school.
Can you just tell me the format for the town hall? Are you gonna do a presentation again, followed by questions, or are you just gonna do it as a Q and A?
No, it it's going to function uh more similar to the way that the parent form forms were set up and then I'll provide an introduction and then uh we will cover some of the frequently asked questions. And then if parents want to ask questions that provide more detail to any of the topics of reopening, then uh the building leadership team will be there to answer the questions. And I also just wanted to add that we will also add an additional pre-K through twelve uh reopening parent town hall meeting in the week just prior to school opening, so that if there are any additional lingering questions, uh, parents will have just one more opportunity to participate in those discussions before we open the doors.
Good, and then there's also the frequently asked questions I know is still being worked on, so that's another source, right?
Yes, we are, we are finalizing that, um, and I anticipate that will be shared in the next twenty-four hours.
Thank you. Several people have asked about that, actually.
Yes, so at 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 my last glance earlier this evening, there were um close to three hundred questions on it. So it has taken some time to dig in and answer all those questions.
Great, and that'll be, um, do we know where we're posting that?
Uh, we will post it on the website, but we will send, also send a listserv blast out to all families.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, any other board member comment?
Todd, if if I could, we are dangerously close to this being Patty Roscoe's final um Region Nine board meeting. And I just would like to again publicly thank her for um everything she has done, the transition she has done with Mike DiStefano, who has been at this meeting and many other meetings, even though he doesn't officially start with us until Friday. Um, it's a wonderful team and I um couldn't be more pleased in how we take care of all of our students, but especially those students who have uh the most needs. So thank you, Patty, thank you, Mike, and I look forward to um to seeing our new leadership team with Mr. DiStefano, even if he's a Yankee fan. And we and we joke that Patty actually had an I E P for her retirement, the special plan.
That's, all right, thank you, thank you, Patty, again, for everything that you've done and and hanging in there all the way to the end with us through all these meetings. We appreciate it, thank you. All right, um, with that, then we'll move on to I. Thank you, I was looking for that motion for adjournment, so uh, Mike, have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, all in favor, aye? It looks unanimous, so we are adjourned at ten twenty-one P M. Thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye. Thank you.